Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the policy meeting for the Halton Catholic District School Board on October 12th, 2021. Please note that this is, this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be available on the board's YouTube channel. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we'll start with the land acknowledgement.
Madam Chair, trustee DeRosa is unable to get in to the meeting, is looking to get in.
Okay, just one second, trustee Antumasi.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandra.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
I'd like to call on trustee Duert to lead us in the opening prayer.
Thank you, madam chair. Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, as we gather today at this policy meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to you. Help us to be able to discuss the matters at hand in a reasonable way. Lord God, let this meeting be productive, and as should be the case in all areas of our lives, help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds as we do the work set before us. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, trustee Duert. And moving on to item two, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
O'Brien?
Moved by trustee O'Brien, seconded by trustee Agnew. Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on to item three, declarations of conflicts.
Sorry, trustee Guzo, I'm opposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm against, madam chair.
Thank you. You know what? We'll take it to a recorded vote. It'll just be easier for recording. Trustee Agnew.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa.
He's still not in, madam chair.
Okay. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Antumasi.
I'm opposed.
And trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Do we have any of the student trustees on? I don't believe we do. However, I do not want to miss them if they are. The agenda passes. Moving on to item three, declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any?
Trustee Guzo, I have a point of privilege, please.
Sure.
I'm trying to bring up the policy meeting agenda items on my computer, and it's not on our website right now.
Should it's, I just logged into it, trustee Carabella. Are you, did you try me? Did you try, and I'm on it. So did you exit and reloading it, like shutting down your?
Okay, I'll try. Thank you.
Also on Escribe as well for immediate, but it, it's been posted since Friday.
I just have the watch on YouTube option, so I will try again. Thank you.
Okay. No worries. Let me know if you need me to email it to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to item four, no delegations. Item five, approval of minutes of the September 14th, 2021 meeting. Can I have someone move?
Trustee Agnew.
Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by?
Duert.
Trustee Duert. Anybody opposed?
I'm opposed to each and every minute that's been provided. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else opposed? Okay, moving on to item number six, action items. Policy II dash zero seven, the school day, daily sessions. Can I have someone please move? Just one second here. Apologies, I just gotta pull it up. Can I have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy II dash zero seven, the school day, daily sessions, elementary and secondary, be forwarded along with amendments to the October 19th, 2021 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Agnew. Trusted, moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Duert. I will pass this over to superintendent Crowell.
Good evening and through you, madam chair. I'm pleased to provide this policy for your consideration. So it is policy two dash zero seven, the school day, daily sessions, elementary and secondary. It has been reviewed as part of the regular policy review cycle. There've been only minor changes in addition to the references and minor edits made to the requirements for clarity. So it is attached for review. Happy to answer, answer any questions that the trustees may have.
Thank you, superintendent Crowell. I will open up the floor. Are there any questions, trustees? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. It's more of a housekeeping. I, I wondered if the word pupil would be better as student. I thought that we were slowly changing over our policies to the word student instead of pupil.
Superintendent Crowell, did you want to?
Yeah, and that's, that's a good suggestion. I hadn't thought about that. I can talk, we can, superintendent Bakai, is that more in line with other policies, would you say? So is it okay to ask her that question?
Absolutely. Superintendent Bakai, I, I, you know what? I, I don't have him in front of me to say whether or not we've been moving from student to pupil.
Thank you and through you, madam chair. We certainly do in a number of our policies. This, this in particular is, is lifted right out of Ontario Regulation 298. So we could, we could go with student or leave it as pupil.
Okay, so for clarity, if, if it's more consistent to, oh, sorry, director Daley, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that because much of the content is lifted, actually lifted, is from the Education Act, that the term in the ed act is pupil. So it might make sense to assist into the language in the Education Act in this particular policy.
Do we have any objections to changing it to pupil? Trustees?
It already is pupil. I was suggesting the other way around, but this, this makes sense. Yes, absolutely, that it's, it's lifted straight from the Education Act versus our language and a normal policy. That makes sense. So I was inquiring about that. Thank you.
And do you have a follow-up, trustee Carabella?
Not on this particular point, but I did have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
It has to do with, so the, the significant changes that happened because of COVID to our school day, the changes in hours, the changes of light, lunch, lunch breaks and that. Is it duly reflected in this policy now for what happened and perhaps it could happen again?
Director Daley, do you wanna start with this one? Director Daley, your mic isn't on. It shows that you're highlighted, but. Art, can we, can you hear me? Hello?
We, we can hear you.
Okay, so it must be.
A significant change in the schedule of the school day, but that in those specific instances would be done in consultation with the, the local school council and then shared with the board as well.
Trustee Carabella, did you get that?
I did. I, I mean, I, I was looking at that red, red highlighted section in red, thinking that perhaps that refers to COVID, but it, it was quite, yes, a significant change is probably an understatement. So and, and then, so it's not really the principle that will develop a proposed, it's really was the senior staff and with the ministry guidelines that we developed our COVID schedule. So I'm not sure if this particular sentence really covers the, that impact or that event, but if, if anyone has a comment on that, I'd be happy to hear it.
Okay, thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Antumasi of the floor.
Thank you through you, madam chair. With reference to this particular policy, we give reference to Ontario Regulation 298. Ontario Regulation 298 depends or draws a lot of its procedures and protocols through the safe school protocols. So COVID-19 being part of that safe school protocol, it would seem to me that this particular policy should speak to that, notwithstanding that the other elements that should be part and parcel of this particular policy will have to speak to the duties of principals, vice principals, teachers and students, insofar as the emergency protocols are rolled out. They have to be by law rolled out the first or second week of September, and I've seen individual schools report to us stating to us that they've done the fire drill protocols. However, I've yet to hear from our night schools. I have not, we have not heard yet from the virtual school, because they also fall onto that, under that. So it, it, insofar as the policy as it reads today, this policy came into play October 23rd, 1973. Much of the wording that I see in this particular protocol does not speak to current ministry jargon, or, sorry, not jargon, but wording. And so my question to superintendent Crowell is where can we look to this policy that would lead us to the safe school protocols and the duties by principals and vice principals and teachers and students insofar as the drill instructions that are required before each semester?
Superintendent Crowell, I'm, I'm not sure if you can answer some of this.
I'll do my best. And you know what? I'd have to double check the specific other, the other policies that we have, but I do believe other policies speak more specifically to the, the types of requirements that we have. The trustee Antumasi is speaking about regards to fire drills, bomb threat drills, those sort of evacuations, lockdowns. I do believe we have other policies and procedures that speak to that. I'm thinking of our, but, but again, if you give me a second, I can figure out which one exactly I'm talking to. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Madam Chair, that would also include instruction given to people that come to visit schools. That's also mandated under safe schools. So again, it would seem to me that this particular policy should speak to it, and it does not.
Okay, thank you, trustee Antumasi. Superintendent Bakai, I know she have your hand up? Okay, seeing as there, or director Daley, is that your hand up again?
Through you, madam chair. Sorry, having trouble with my mic.
Okay.
I just wanted to talk with what superintendent Crowell has, has indicated. And to clarify, trustee Antumasi, this is, this policy is specific to the daily sessions, which does come from the Education Act, and each item within the policy is taken right from the Ontario Regulation 298. The other items do fall under the protocols for emergency procedures, and they are indicated in other documents within our policies and procedures.
Thank you, superintendent Bakai. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, madam chair. Sorry, I just, I was, I was trying to listen there. I just, trustee Antumasi, did I hear you comment about drills in virtual school? I, I thought I heard that. I wasn't sure if you were actually, if you were actually saying that there are drills that happen in virtual school when you were referencing fire drills and such. Could you just clear that, clarify that for me? So in case I'm missing something?
Yes, through you, madam chair. I think you are missing something, trustee Guzo. I think you need to read the legislation.
Actually, it's trustee Agnew, not trustee Guzo. And what I actually asked wasn't pertaining to legislation. I was asking if you actually said that there was, there was drills that pertain to virtual school before I rewatched the video. Just wanted to clarify that.
So our virtual school trustee Agnew has a place. Within that place, that location, that physical location, there are people that work there. As such, they have the same protocols that would appear or would take place in another school. That's what I was referring to.
Okay, well, trustee Antumasi, thank you. Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up question?
I do have a follow-up question. Thank you, madam chair. And perhaps this is a question for one of our superintendents or for director Daley. Maybe you could clarify that, although I know it has absolutely nothing to do with this policy. I'm wondering if maybe you could, could clarify how that would work with those individuals who are working for the virtual school from a, an actual brick and mortar location? Would they just simply follow the protocols of that particular brick and mortar school? If you could advise, that'd be great.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Superintendent Crowell, or actually maybe even superintendent Denofol, virtual school, if I'm not mistaken, is just that, it is a virtual school. Superintendent Crowell?
Sorry, through you, madam chair. I think trustee, or sorry trustee, I think superintendent Denofol would be better. I had, I better prepared to answer that question. I did have absurd.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Superintendent Denofol?
Thank you, madam chair and through you. So for the virtual school, the administrators are working out of a hub site at this time, and so they will follow the protocol of that site in terms of emergency evacuation, fire drill, bomb drill. And then when the staff is working out of either St. Luke's, St. John Paul, or St. Elizabeth's Seaton, they would be responsible to follow the protocol that has been set out at each of those three schools for fire drills, bomb threats, and evacuation.
Thank you, superintendent Denofol. Is, yes, there's.
Chair, I have a follow-up.
Okay, trustee Antumasi.
So as for my follow-up, special education protocols should also be included in there, given that our special education has many more requirements, and the protocols are vastly different in terms of manpower ratios and so on and so forth. So it would seem to me that if we speak about the school day, the school day can change within hours, within weeks, months, and during the school year. So it would seem to me that this particular policy should give reference to those instances, whether it be through legislation that's specific, whether it be through other procedures and protocols as per our other policies. I don't see that in this particular policy. And as I said, October 23rd, 1973, this particular policy has been around. The wording doesn't fit or speak to current conditions. Thank you. Whoever wants to answer that.
I'm sorry, trustee Antumasi, I, I got it more as a statement than a question, so, but superintendent Bakai, it looks like you have your hand up. If you wanna take a job at that.
I do, and thank you, madam chair. Trustee Antumasi, I can offer the information that's on page two, the second bullet down. Refers to board may reduce the length of the instructional program on each day to less than five hours for a day for an exceptional pupil in a special ed program. So that speaks to the individualized program that would be specific to students in terms of a modified day and would be outlined in the student's IEP. So that's the reference there that speaks to an exceptional student's instructional day.
Point of clarification, madam chair. So with reference to my previous questions, superintendent Crowell, superintendent Denofol, and superintendent Bakai, both, all three alluded to the fact that there are other policies that have governance and speak to this particular policy. It would seem to me that those associated policies and procedures would fall into the purview of this particular policy. It would seem to me then that they should be mentioned simply because they would be overlapping in protocols.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi.
I abstain, madam chair.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
In favor.
I'm also in favor. Moving on to the next item. Can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy II dash one one, daily teaching plans be forwarded along with amendments to the October 19th, 2021 regular board meeting for approval?
Trustee Agnew.
Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by?
O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien. Superintendent Crowell, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, madam chair. Pleased to provide for consideration revisions to policy two dash eleven, daily teacher plans as recommended by staff. This was reviewed as part of the regular policy review cycle. There are only minor housekeeping changes made. So this policy is attached for review and consideration, and again, happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you, superintendent Crowell. Trustees, do we have any questions?
I do, madam chair. I have my hand up.
Oh, sorry, trustee Antumasi, it sometimes gets lost. Trustee Antumasi, go ahead. You have the floor.
So madam chair, this, again, this particular policy goes back to the daily teacher's plans of October 23rd, 1973. Was revised November 20th, 2018. This particular policy has contractual implications with all of our bargaining groups. I don't see any reference within the body of this particular policy that speaks to OACTA as an example, both OACTA elementary and OACTA secondary. So my question to, I guess, superintendent Crowell is how do we include that in this particular policy?
Through you, madam chair. It, it does say in the policy that the policy applies to all HCDSP teachers and the policy applies to all schools. Is there something that, that you want that speaks to that more clearly?
So again, I would just make reference to the fact that we have contractual obligations with OACTA, both elementary and secondary, and then with our assistance and so on and so forth. I don't see any reference to that. The Education Act would speak to it in passing. Ontario Regulation 298, again, would speak to it in passing. And then our growing assessment, evaluation, and reporting in Ontario school does not address that particular element. And, and furthermore, contractual obligations and agreements are between the board and the bargaining units. And we have specific bargaining units, and we do have leeway from central bargaining insofar as we're able to make our own agreements with teachers on this particular matter.
Thank you, trustee Antumasi. Director Daley, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I would just note that those contractual agreements are in our collective agreements. So the details as to what a certain expectation might be with regards to daily lesson plans or how they're provided are in the collective agreement. Wouldn't typically attach a collective agreement to a forward-facing policy document.
Point of clarification, secretary Daley, can you speak to what you mean by a forward?
I mean a policy document that's available.
Forward policy document, yes.
Director Daley, are you able to respond to that?
I'm sorry, I did. I, what I, what I was referring to was our policies and procedures are on our board public website. We typically don't attach our various bargaining units, collective agreements, to any policies or procedures that we have listed.
Thank you, director Daley. Are there any further questions? Okay, we'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
I will abstain.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi.
Abstain.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
In favor.
I am also in favor. The policy will be sent to the next board meeting. Moving on to, that's it for action items. We're moving on to item 7.1, discussion items. Policy I dash two stick, two six, student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, madam chair. There's been a lot of discussion about this lately as early as our last board meeting. I know that this has come up for conversation previously, but it doesn't seem to be, it, it seems to be an issue that keeps coming back to the table, and I know that we do have some trustees. I know that trustee George had mentioned with reference to waiting to see what was going to be happening at another school board. But I think the reality is, is that we have students who are requesting to have equitable. But I think the reality is, is that we have students who are requesting to have equitable opportunity to apply to be trustees with our board. We have heard that the Student Senate has supported this unanimously. We have heard delegations on this matter. We know that we have a number of students in our system at the secondary level who are not Catholic. And you know, they're not asking for an automatic place at the table. What they are asking for is an opportunity to run, to be considered as a student trustee. And we have the capability as a Board of Trustees to review this policy and make those appropriate changes. I don't think we can continue to dismiss this request. And I think we really need to take a hard look at what opportunities there could be with respect to this particular policy. I know that we keep hearing that there's issues with respect to denominational rights. But, and I'm not going to get back and forth into quoting the Ed Act. I can send you the references with respect to the Ed Act and how it speaks specifically to student trustees. The bottom line is, is that we as a group, we as a board have the ability to make a change, to allow equitable access for all of our students who wish to aspire and run for a student trustee position, to have that opportunity. I think that's a wonderful testament to who we are. And I'd like to see my fellow trustees come together to think about some ways that we could review and revisit this policy. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. So we'll open the discussion. I see Trustee Duert, do you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Some good thoughts there. So I have a few thoughts which I made some jot notes here. So if you recollect, we did a professional development session for trustees and we had constitutional experts' opinion on this matter. So my understanding from that was that we have to be very cautious as it has a potential for bigger impact. So that being said aside, the matter is before the courts. And the individual who delegated this party to that lawsuit. I would like to see the outcome of the lawsuit before making any kind of a decision on this matter because it's impacting lots of things. So it's not that I'm opposed to anything, opposed to thinking about something else. But I'd like to wait for the process to run its course. I have a child in high school and I understand student voice very well. And I'm going to be very supportive and doing what is right and best for our students. So saying that, at the last board meeting, Trustee Bowie touted the idea of a student advisor position to our student trustees. And I would be very interested in working with our three student trustees in coming up with a motion. I'll help them to table it and we can all work together on it. We can collaborate on that motion and how it will look. And we'll come up with something really nice benefiting all our students and including as many students, including all the students, not as many, including all students, impossible. So that was my thought and I'm thinking this particular policy came up before the board just recently. And I'm not sure, and I don't think we need to change this policy at this time. But whatever we want to do could be done through a motion. And so that was my thoughts. And I'm happy to help the student trustees work on something and we can all work together collaboratively. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Duert. We've got Trustee Anne Tomasi.
Through you, Madam Chair. So yes, we have deliberated this particular topic due to student trustees asking the board to revisit. It would seem to be that I will agree with Vice Chair Duert in that it's premature because we are awaiting a challenge through the courts. Insofar as the policy is concerned, this particular policy is very specific. It speaks to Catholic and that's the operative word because it fits within the it fits within the fact that we do have and hold denominational rights. Given our denominational rights, whether it be parent council, which Catholics refer to as Catholic parent council. And whether or not we speak to students and students that take part in the Senate from which we receive our student trustee nominees, they all speak to having to be Catholic. Therefore, it would seem to me that this particular policy should sit the way it is. And then a new policy, if we wish to accommodate non-Catholics to provide input to the student trustees, which they do already through the Senate, then we would have to set up a new vehicle that would circumvent, which if we are circumventing the student trustees, then it would seem to me that you'd be weakening the position of student trustee. So there's a few things that I've said there, both from a commentary. But I've also made specific reference to the fact that any policy that we write, because we are a Catholic entity, Catholic organization, and we speak about the sees of Rome and abiding by Catholic ideals, then it would seem to me that only a Catholic can speak to that. And that non-Catholics would have to speak to something that's relevant to either world religions because it would have to encompass more than one religion. Whereas we speak solely to Catholic faith formation.
It looks like we lost you there, Trustee Anne Tomasi. Trustee Carabella, I'm, Trustee Agnew, sorry, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So a couple of comments there. Careful way to say this. I actually would disagree that having a non-Catholic student trustee would weaken the student trustee position. I also would encourage my fellow trustees to take a look at the previous student trustee updates that we get. And not all of them are specific to Catholic education. They actually represent a number of different areas. And if, you know, there could be mechanisms put in place to ensure that there is still an equitable or consistent Catholic lens and Catholic voice amongst our student trustees. What we're saying here is, let's try to, what I'm saying here is, let's try to find an opportunity to at least find a way to have one of those positions be open to a non-Catholic student trustee. And I'm also not interested, with all due respect, to Trustee Duert's idea around an accommodated position. It's a token position, in my opinion. You're either a student trustee or you're not a student trustee. So finding something else for our non-Catholic students to run parallel or to kind of be the same thing, it's not the same thing. They have, they have not asked for a token position. They've not asked for another, another opportunity to be accommodated for. They have asked for this opportunity, which is to run for a student trustee position. And that is what they want. So I think anything less than that is actually not listening to what the students are asking for. And again, we heard very clearly at our board meeting that they all supported the letter to write a letter. So Student Senate is in full support of this idea. And, you know, frankly, yes, could there be longer lasting ramifications? Perhaps, but that's like with any decision that you make as a collective. I would, I would actually say that perhaps we need to have a legal opinion, that this is in fact something that would be contrary to us as a board or contrary to what we should be, should be doing. If that is the concern with trustees, then let's get a legal opinion. And let's see what that comes back at and we can use that to help make some of these decisions.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering if we could get an update perhaps from Director Daley as there was a motion passed with one of the delegations that brought the student voice to a committee with staff and the director. If I remember well, or could we have an update on that? And perhaps that is the place too where the students will have a voice. I'm just wondering if there's any update on that committee. Thank you.
Director Daley?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the question, Trustee, Trustee Carabella. Thanks for the question, Trustee Carabella. Actually, the memo is going out to the system in our next Tuesday memo batch with regards to the Staff Working Committee on Student Leadership.
Okay, thank you so much.
Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that we, we know intuitively that the, our schools have changed, our system has changed. Initially, we didn't probably think that we would have as significant a population of non-Catholic students. I think as all systems evolve and change, I think we need to look at our position and where we are and to be accommodating to the needs of all students. I think what Trustee or Vice Chair Duart proposed is prudent. Compromise doesn't sit well with everyone. Typically doesn't sit well with anyone, but it is a solution to move in the right direction. Doing nothing to me is not really an option. We need to, we need to start, if you want to say, start the ball rolling or moving in a direction that is, that is more responsive. I think it's, I think it's a good solution. There potentially is impact based on whatever the court decides, but that more than likely will be several years down the road. I think a compromise in the interim, though it may not suit everybody well, is action and it's moving, moving in the right direction. And it is trying to come up with a collaborative solution. So, so I like the idea and I like the idea that it's being developed with our, with our trustees, our student trustees. So I would support something along those lines. And I, and I think, again, it's prudent to leave the policy as it is and then work on this, this new position, which acts as an advisory role and has, has some real opportunity and participation with it, which can be built into, into the formation of that position. So, so I would support something along those lines.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Next, we have Trustee O'Hearn-Ternotta.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So I agree with Trustee Murphy in regards to doing nothing is really not an option because we're silencing the voice. Now, I just wanted to ask through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew, did you mention something in regards to changing the policy but to allow for one of the three student trustees to maybe be non-Catholic? Is that something that you had mentioned, if I may ask that question?
Yeah, absolutely. Trustee Agnew, are you comfortable?
Yeah.
Policy, we're allowed to have discussions, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, when we're talking about compromise and I don't, you know, while I'm not in favor of having an accommodated position, I certainly do appreciate the importance of compromise. And, you know, I think there's an opportunity for us here to, to look at, you know, limiting, if you will, the number of non-Catholic student trustees, similar to the approach that was taken with respect to parent councils, where, you know, we took a look at what that would look like from a non-Catholic participation perspective. And I think that that's something that we could do here. I think there could be some mechanism put in place that would say perhaps one of the three student trustees could, could be non-Catholic. And, you know, that opportunity would still allow our non-Catholic students to run for one of those positions. You know, I definitely think it's something that we could think about and thereby still, you know, ensuring that we have, you know, Catholic student voice at that table, if you will.
So just to follow up, and thank you, Trustee Agnew. Just, I offered up to my fellow trustees, if that was a compromise and we took one of the three positions and allowed a non-Catholic student trustee to attain that position, if it ended up that way, do you still think we have those legal implications that would make us feel like we have to wait a few years until that legal decision came down?
Trustee Agnew, are you okay to answer?
Yeah, I don't know if the question is for me, but I certainly would be okay to answer. Listen, I mean, you know, we know that this legal case is, again, with another board. And, you know, it could take years and years and years before that's resolved. That's just the reality of the legal process. And, you know, we don't know how that's going to come out. You know, so I think that there could be some merit in us obtaining a legal opinion at this point to see if we actually do need to even wait for that particular case to play itself out. And, you know, that could perhaps be a first step before we went down, you know, a complicated conversation around this. I think a lot of what we do at the table here is we speculate, none of us are lawyers. You know, we speculate on outcomes, we speculate on what this says and that says. If we really wanted to be as certain as possible, I think we could get a legal opinion that might help alleviate some of the concerns of some of the trustees. And then pending the results of that legal opinion, again, that could dictate if we touch it now or if we wait for the outcome of what could be a number of years for that other law, that other case to see itself through. But again, I don't know if you want someone more qualified to answer that question, that's my take on it.
Thank you, trustee. I was just thinking from one of the trustees that wanted to wait and wait until the legal opinion came down, how they felt about that compromise. So I'll leave it at that if someone wants to answer.
Madam Chair, can I just add something to that?
Are you going to answer the piece about, because we have other?
I can't answer, but I'm not qualified to answer. But I just want to say if the, if the legal opinion comes and says all three can be non-Catholics, I'm good with that. So, so if it says no, it can be, then let's, let's wait and that's my thinking. I'm not going to jump just because, you know. So we need to make a well-informed, rational decision here. We are not shunning the student voice. We want to listen to them, we want to do something about it. We'll get our students involved and they seem to be very knowledgeable and are interested to work together. So I'm thinking we should think about that part of it rather than just jumping because everybody's saying that. Let's do the right thing and let's do it correctly.
Sorry, Trustee Duert, so just to confirm, you're okay with the compromise to get a legal opinion to see what it says?
No, I'd rather wait for the, the case to roll out in court and have an alternate position as the student trustee, the student trustee themselves said. And I'd be happy to work and support them and not only give them what they want, let's see what, how we can improve that and how we can add on to that and kind of make them involved in the decision-making process. So I'd rather wait for the court process to, to run its course and then make a decision based on that.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, I see you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I'm thinking along the lines as Trustee, Trustee Duart. The fact of the matter is, is that the court case has been launched and we are, I think, we are obligated to wait for the results. Had the court case not been launched, maybe we may consider some of the compromises that are being contemplated here. Legal opinion and so on and so forth. But no legal opinion at this stage of the game would, would compel us to act ahead of time, ahead of a legal, the court decision being made. So, you know, the, this environment is changing, not because of us, but it's changing because of others. And we are compelled, I think, we are obligated to wait for a court decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Anne Tomasi, you have your hand up?
I do, Madam Chair. So I would like to speak to the fact that this particular policy is very specific insofar as it has a requirement which speaks to having a priest or parish priest provide letters of recommendation. As background though, I have to say that our board currently with three student trustees is over its limit based on our enrollment amount or enrollment. We really should only, we only qualify for two trustees. Past boards made a decision to extend it to three because of our geog- Past boards made a decision to extend it to three because of our geographic area, being that we have four communities that are fairly spread, so they decided to have three. It would seem to me by taking one, it would not be representative of what the board looks like from a geographic perspective. And then, so my question to Trustee Agnew and/or Duarte or Hern Chernotta or Trustee Murphy, how would you deal with the requirement, and that is that you need a parish priest to write a letter of recommendation?
I don't think at this point, though, Trustee Ian Tomasi, that there's any proposed change, so.
No, I'm asking specifically, how would we accommodate if we were going to make a change to this particular policy? Would we be removing the requirement of a parish priest?
I understand. Trustee Agnew, I see you have your camera on. Did you want to?
I believe that's what you would be doing. I mean, we would be looking at the entire policy if we needed to amend the policy to include non-Catholic student trustees, so then I think you would want to amend any of the criteria with respect to the parish priest's letter from someone. So, yeah, I think if you're changing the policy, you're changing the policy. Can I finish talking?
Trustee Ian Tomasi, let Trustee Agnew finish her comment, please.
So the question went out to us, and I think, yes, you would change that, just like we change other policies, just like we amend other policies, just like we make those additions or deletions or edits, you would do the same thing with this, so that the policy read in a way that would support a non-Catholic student trustee having the ability. So I would think that that requirement would be waived for someone who is not of the Catholic faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Are there any other comments, discussion points?
Just one observation, Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Trustee DeRosa.
So let's assume we move on this before the court case. First of all, a preempt, a move ahead of the court case presumes that the court's decision will be in favor of non-Catholic trustees sitting on our boards. What if the decision came the other way? Wouldn't we be faced with having to reverse a change in policy that was prematurely imposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, did you?
Yeah, I can close it off. I just did have one question for Trustee Ian Tomasi. When he was speaking about the limits on student trustees, perhaps, I know that he's quite well-versed in legislation and the Education Act and such, I'm wondering if he could highlight for me or provide the information where it states in the legislation that you can't have more than a certain number of student trustees? If you could help me out, that would be, that'd be great.
No, I cannot. However, I will say to you that if you look at the policy that pertained to student trustees, it gives reference to enrollment. And there's ample information in the past board meetings that if you take the time to go and review them, you will find that our board added a third trustee by exception.
I'll make sure to go ahead and do that, just so that I can get that information on that, on those statements. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that there's no more questions, thank you for the discussion items and thank you, trustees, for maintaining some decorum. We'll move on to article, not article, oh my goodness. Item number eight, information items. As you can see, there are information. So the way I'm gonna work this is, we don't normally have conversations about administrative procedure unless there is some specifics. I see Trustee O'Brien, you have a question on a particular procedure?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. And it's about the procedure on equity and inclusion. I've gone through it and I'm looking back at the wonderful policy we created, which we worked very hard on, it was rejected so many times, brought back the policy, rejected, brought back the policy, and finally, it was voted upon. And I do really uphold that policy, it's a fantastic policy. And I'm looking at the procedure and we do really, really try to make a, I know the staff really does their best to make procedures coincide very well with the policies, match the policies. And I think with this procedure, they've done a great, a great job. It really is very close to that policy. But there's one area where I'm just a little questioning about. And if you look at our policy on equity and inclusion, under requirements in the first section called Board Policies, Programs, Procedures, Practices, it mentions everything in the preamble and concludes with the phrase, "Within the context of the denominational rights of the Catholic school boards." I'll read that again. It says, "Within the context of the denominational rights of the Catholic school boards," which is a great statement to have in our policy. It sets the tone. It really is great in that preamble. However, in the procedure, I don't see the mention of denominational rights until Section 5. So I know procedure is a staff thing and I don't want to touch it, but I wonder if, through you, Madam Chair, to Director Daley, if you would consider inserting that term somewhere under the first section, under Boards, Policies, Programs, Procedures, and Practices, just so that there's a closer correlation between the procedure and the policy. Director Daley?
Director Daley, do you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. So you're asking or suggesting it should go under Section 1, under Requirements, as opposed to perhaps right up front, under Purpose?
Is it under Purpose? Like, I couldn't see it. Maybe it is. And maybe I'm wrong on this. Well, there's under, I see, Purpose. Yeah, perhaps it would even be better there. I think that's an excellent suggestion, Director Daley. That would even be a better place. But it's just, I know the procedure is a staff thing, it's just a suggestion.
Director Daley, or maybe, do we have Seda on the line? I'm wondering if this changes the... Hi, Seda, how are you?
Good evening.
If we were to move that up to Purpose, or if you were to move it up to Purpose, not changing any of the wording, but just move it up in regards to denominational rights, would that change, change anything in the procedure?
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. It wouldn't, but it's my understanding that the rights including and set out in the Constitution Act of 1867 refers to the denominational rights. Those are protected in the Constitutional Act of 1867, so by adding that in there, that's already implied in the, in terms of the denominational rights.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Briens, does that make sense?
Well, it does and it doesn't. I know it's implied, but with a procedure this important, I think it's important to state it. But that's just my opinion. I don't know what other trustees might be feeling or thinking. Especially considering our vision statements say so clearly that we are distinctly Catholic.
Right. We are keeping in mind that this is procedural as well.
And I don't want to touch it.
Yeah, yeah. We are, we govern the policy piece of it, not the procedural piece. But I think they've taken it and I'm sure they'll take it into consideration. I see Trustee Carabella has her hand up as well.
Thank you. May I have the floor? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Trustee.
Yeah, I thought that was important, what Trustee O'Brien brought up. You can't state it enough times and it's better that it's clearly worded and it doesn't impact anything at that procedure level, it's not taking away from anything, it's actually adding. So I thought it was a very good point. What I wanted to ask was, under the data collection, it's number nine for the procedure, it's point number two, second bullet under nine, data collection, the board will. It says, "Collect data on suspensions, expulsions, and exclusions and analyze data to ensure that no particular group of students is overrepresented and address disparities that may be revealed through data collection." So I understand, like, addressing the disparities that may be revealed through data collection because the facts before us is the data. But I'm not, I, how will the administration, who is going to be doing this, how are they going to ensure that no particular group of students is overrepresented? I mean, the data is the data, so I'm not sure if that's in reporting, or how are they going to ensure that no particular group of students is overrepresented? Thank you.
Seda, would you like to?
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. So the idea is that when we collect the data and disaggregate, then we will be able to assess whether there's an overrepresentation of any particular group. And if there is any overrepresentation, then we can go back and look at our disciplinary practices, look at building capacity again among staff to make sure that those disparities that are addressed and those gaps are reduced. So this is something that's being, that's being looked at, at a number of other boards in the GTA as well, and it sort of is part of some of the indicators that boards are required to collect, analyze, and then address.
Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up question, Trustee Carabella?
Well, I do. I, it doesn't address my question because I would say that you could say that, "Collect data on suspensions, expulsions, and exclusions and analyze the data." And analyze the data and address disparities that may be revealed through data collection. I'm just not understanding how they can ensure that no particular group, sort of, that can happen after they address the disparities, but I don't understand beforehand that it's phrased like that. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Seda.
Yes, and you're absolute, and through you, Madam Chair, absolutely, Trustee Carabella, you're right. The ensuring it happens after the data is collected and analyzed, so that is sort of the sequence of it, is that we can gather the data, look at it, analyze it, and then the purpose of it is to ensure that there is no overrepresentation of particular groups or disparities and outcomes for particular groups.
Yes, thank you. So I'm not sure if that comes across the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up again?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is on the same bullet, second bullet on data collection, it does say, "Collect data on suspensions, expulsions, and exclusions and analyze data to ensure that no particular group of students is overrepresented." My question is to Director Daley. So Director Daley, so if there is a group that is suspended more than another, does that mean they will be treated differently when it comes to progressive discipline?
Sorry, Trustee O'Brien, I don't know if that question is for Director Daley or if Seda.
No, no, I want that to Director Daley. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Director Daley, the question, question specific to you, if you could answer that.
So the reason why we will be collecting the data to see if there is overrepresentation in certain areas is to see if there is overrepresentation. You collect the data, you see what the data tells you, and then you try and mitigate or address why that disparity might exist. So there's a number of ways that you could address it. Certainly with regards to suspensions and expulsions now, when principals are contemplating a suspension, there is a series of mitigating factors that they would keep into, or that they need to take into account. So I think it's premature to say how we would deal with it, but I think it would be, I don't want to, but it wouldn't make sense to dig into the data and then not try and address it. So certainly, when we see what the data tells us, if there are either disparities or gaps or barriers, then we'd want to put in a plan or response in place to eliminate those gaps or barriers if they exist.
Okay, but my question to you, Director Daley, is if there is overrepresentation, will all students be treated the same when it comes to progressive discipline?
All students are treated the same with regards to, well, we would hope all students are treated equitably with regards to how we enforce progressive discipline. Different students right now, depending on certain mitigating factors, different things are taken into account with regards to progressive discipline measures already, depending on the nature of what the discipline is or the nature of what the offense is. We already, we already do that. What we're trying to do is treat all students equitably.
So would a mitigating factor of race be taken into consideration when it comes to progressive discipline?
It could be. It could be now. It's in the act, or it's in the Safe Schools Policy now. It could be a student with an exceptionality, there's a number of mitigating factors.
But I said race.
...with regards to how they would deal with a particular disciplinary action.
Thank you, Director Daley.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I have one more question for Director Kroll, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, through Madam Chair, to Superintendent Kroll. Last bullet in reviewing curriculum, it says, "You will review curriculum and clearly learning about the history of residential schools, treaties, and the legacy of colonialism," which I think is a great thing. Absolutely, it's got to be done. But through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Kroll, isn't that really a ministry responsibility, reviewing curriculum? I may be ignorant on this, please enlighten me. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'm happy to just answer that. I think the intention is to review curriculum and look for opportunities where we can find those teachable moments, where we can address those, you know, the history of residential schools. So it's not that we're reviewing curriculum and making changes in curriculum, that's not the intention of that statement at all. The intention of the statement is that we're reviewing the curriculum to look for those opportunities. We're working with our Indigenous Education Advisor, we're working with our department heads and subject councils, and our schools, to make sure that they're taking those opportunities to do that type of reflection, that type of teaching, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
I'll sheet my turn, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Ian Tomasi, you have the floor.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. As I review this policy, I would like to ask Seda, PPM 165, where do we specifically speak to that within the context of denominational rights? So in the body of your policy here and the changes that are proposed, we examine it closely, we would be looking for areas that speak to and support denominational rights within the hiring and equitability within the context of students and teachers?
Seda, I don't know, are you comfortable answering that? I see Director Daley has his hand up as well.
I can try and then maybe Director Daley would like to add to that. So we're looking at the procedure here and of course, the procedure for... and of course, the procedure follows from the policy and is as very clearly stated in the policy throughout. Um, we are, the the ENI policy, equity and inclusive education, has been developed within the context and centering denominational rights right from the get-go. So the procedure really follows from the policy, which has already been developed from that con- um, and references to PPM uh, one sixty-five uh, are made uh, because, also because, you know, because of the timing of the uh, PPM that came out after the policy was finalized. Uh, and the procedure, everything in the procedure, as discussed in the purpose as well, has been within the context of denominational rights. Uh, and even when we look at specific um, language from PPM uh, one sixty-five, it's about hiring from underrepresented groups, um, which is um, not seen in any way contrary to uh, denominational rights. Um, so that's sort of, that's how I approached it and uh, perhaps uh, Director Daley would like to expand on that.
Thank you, Seda. Director Daley, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, not a whole lot, just that um, uh, our our policy, hiring, uh, hiring and promotion and hiring practices for teachers and occasional uh, teachers, the um, the procedure that we put into place to align with PPM one sixty-five are listed as associated policies and procedures in the uh, in this procedure.
Follow-up, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, trustee Ian Tomasi.
Okay, so um, seeing that I really didn't get an answer to one sixty-five, let me turn our attention to the rescinding of section, regulation two seventy-four forward slash twelve, which amended the hiring policies specifically for Catholic education and even for independent schools uh, that are faith-based. So again, my question goes back to the body of this document. When hiring a teacher, how do we safeguard or speak to protecting the rights of Catholics? Catholic teachers or personnel?
Okay, thank you trustee Ian Tomasi. Um, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
I I can answer that question.
Okay, Director Daley, go ahead.
Well, I I I mean, again, I I would, I I would point trustees, I would point trustees to the associated policies and procedures that are listed with this procedure. Procedure VI ninety-nine, which we uh, which we put into place last year, is essentially, it came out of PPM one sixty-five, PPM one sixty-five. As trustee Ian Tomasi's noted, is is very clear uh, with regards to the denominational rights of Catholic school boards. So I, I think it is there.
Thank you, Director Daley. Um.
A clarifying question?
Go ahead, trustee Ian Tomasi.
So Secretary Daley, then, how does regulation two ninety-eight speak to operation of schools in general that would apply to domin- denominational rights?
I I'm sorry, uh, Director Daley, I'm not sure, is that clarifying what we were just discussing?
Yeah, uh, thank you and through through you, Madam Chair, um, regulation two ninety-eight.
Speaks to to um.
Fairness and transparency. Regulation two ninety-eight um, ensures the best possible programming. Uh, so we always want to ensure we have the best possible programming for our students. So as trustee Ian Tomasi noted, I think uh, both the PPM, the REG, and ENI all do speak to each other and all support each other.
Thank you, Director Daley. Seeing as there's no other um, questions, um, those are our administrative procedures as listed. Item eight point three, upcoming agenda items are listed for uh, trustees um, review. Um, item nine, miscellaneous information, there is none. Ten, correspondence, there is none. Item eleven, in camera, there's no need to move into camera. Item twelve, motion to excuse absent committee members, there are no um, absent committee members. And lastly, motion to adjourn. Can I have someone motion to adjourn?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte, thank you trustee Duarte. Do we have a seconder?
Brian.
Trustee O'Brien. Is there anyone opposed? Okay, uh, thank you trustees, and I am on closing prayer this evening. So please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Giving thanks to the Lord with a grateful heart. Heavenly Father, I give thanks for waking me up on this glorious day. I thank you for protection, not only over myself, but for my loved ones as well. I give thanks for health, strength, grace, forgiveness, peace, joy, for loving me unconditionally and never failing me. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.